I didn't have the comps, but I just was talking.
What do your comps entail?
My comps were ridiculous. I looked at Harvard, I looked at Yale, I looked at all of their two exams they said versus the other. Mine, I was more exam, the US 13 exam question on June 30th. We have faculty review, and then they give us a list of 10 on the 14th of August. We have until August 24th to submit that 20, 25 pages for each one of the questions. And I can't remember if it's in four or five. It's in four, right? So I have to write 8, 100 pages in 10 days on topics that I know you're.
So we're supposed to cancel eating, cancel your family, you're supposed to cancel work, you're supposed to cancel.
You have to take it like it's a job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretend it's.
I guess, I'm totally like awesome.
It's, it's, it will be, you're gonna have to take part in it, and it will be like your job. It's like, it's like having a brief due and two weeks to write, and you don't know what it is, and you know what the general is, and until you get the other person's brief, you don't know what you're arguing against if you're the defending party. And you have, you know, usually 30 days, sometimes less, but it always gets done in the last week to write, and it could be, you know, 20 pages, it could be 100 pages, you just don't know. And there's, you know, multiple issues. So, but yeah, it'll be fun. It'll be fun. Yeah, I'm gonna get started, just because I think we're only waiting.
I offered a take.
Okay, great, alright. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 10:14. Thank you all for coming. This is the Department of County Commission on the Status of Women, Saturday, May 18, 4:19. First up on our agenda, because our recorder isn't here, Liz has offered to take notes. We also have meeting minutes from April 13th that were circulated by Jordan. Is everyone getting those meeting minutes?
Yes.
Are there any questions or comments or concerns on those meeting minutes? Okay, here are none, then I'll accept a motion to approve those minutes. There is not a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We also do need minutes from the hearing on the 24th. I don't know if Jordan took them or not, she didn't circulate it. I'll follow up with her on that point, so that we can have them for our next meeting. So, two things we really need to, three things, significant things we've talked about today. One, a recap of the hearing that we had last month. Two, development of our report to the Mass Commission, which may be part of the recap discussion. And then, three, a discussion on our future meetings scheduled and locations. Now, where, what we have done and decided that was that we were going to meet 10 times a year from September through June, so June will be our last meeting of the year. I want to talk about that first, only because it's related to the other two points. So, our annual report is due, to be filed in June. Now, we did not know this being a brand new commission, but apparently the Mass Commission, and I circulated the email from Sasha, the Mass Commission incorporates the reports from the regional commission in their report, and their report is due to the Commonwealth in June. So Sasha had asked that our reports be submitted by yesterday, or sometime last meeting, the 15th, which Biden told her we couldn't do because we didn't have a meeting to even discuss a report since the hearing, you know, and I talked to Nina about it at our last meeting, and Nina had said getting to her early, getting to the knowledge of this fine. However, like, it's our inaugural year for our report to be included. So what I would like to do today is suggest that perhaps we spend the time going through the things you want included in our report, and perhaps give me or whoever wants to write it with me the authority to submit a draft report to the commission as soon as we can, with the idea that our meeting in June, we would then come back and ratify and make any changes and submit a final report. Because I would like to have something, and I think again, it's important for us as a new commission to have something. So, that being said, I want to talk about June meeting first, because I'd like to be able to have a talk and draw up the timing will be on actually getting to a final report. And I'd like to try to do something as quickly as possible. Wondering what you all felt about meeting for our last meeting of this fiscal hearing on Saturday, June 1st. It's only two weeks away, so it's a short timeframe. Can't sit first.
I'm out of town.
You're out of town.
I have a meeting here.
The eighth? I'm out of town? So the next date would be the 15th?
I'm out of town. Not that important.
Well, I'd like to meet as many commissioners as possible. The 15th is better. Okay, so it'll be June 15th. And we'll have to, I'll have to coordinate with Christina as to whether or not we can be at 9 o'clock at our regular time. If we can't, I'll come back to the library and we'll do 10 o'clock here.
So should we plan for 9?
Plan for 9? But I can be able to, I'll email Christina. Plan for 9 at Over the Street, but the backup will be 10 here.
According to our last chair, is there anything to vote the proxy vote copy of the agenda in us?
We don't have a proxy vote. We do allow remote participation. If you want to comment, if you wanted to call in.
In case?
Yeah, and, yes, so we'll be able to vote remotely if you wanted to.
Okay.
Okay, so, working backwards, let's talk about the hearing. I brought with us, for purposes of care, and preparing our report, the papers from the small groups. All this stuff together. Did anybody bring the sign and cheese? Who ended up taking the sign and cheese? Do I think Jordan may have taken one? I want to recap the attendance, because I didn't make her copy of it, so.
Wasn't he sent it from April 24th?
It's okay, I have it. I just must have it, I should use a different folder. Anyway, just sort of overall, what did you all think? And how'd it go?
It was great. It was the first time I had been, well, was the first time I did this. But, I mean, I thought it was great. It was, it was nice to hear from women in the audience about, you know, what they're passionate about, what they feel are important in terms of themselves, their communities, their organizations. I wish we had had a bigger crowd, but I think that the crowd that we did have was very engaging. And I really liked the small groups that we got into. I thought that that was very helpful. And it allowed us a chance to have a more intimate conversation with the women that were there. And we talked about, you know, some things that, you know, are important to us as work. Yeah. And Nasha?
Laura, I agree, the small groups, I think, lends more in-depth discussion of personal topics. It made this really different, between what the two groups produced.
Yeah.
The common thread I found was certainly fundamentals, housing, transportation, and economic inequality. And those three, I think, can just sub-range, each of the different topics off of more than we are. But that was encouraging, because now I know with certainty that this isn't just anecdotal information, that we have, this is consistent, this is a consistent third of our county. Also, like to mention that I caught up with J U L I A K E O, K E O H O, is that how it's pronounced? K E O H O Q.
I tell my guy, I'm not K E O, I'm just a seller, I'm a person. But we had a real good conversation, hand, another family, just respect within our group, we were on the right side here.
Oh, we got one, she was.
Janice.
She worked.
Who was?
Who was?
Universe content, and I thought the people in the group felt it was such polite behavior.
Yeah. I was in this group right here, and it went really well. We focused a lot on domestic violence as an issue, and it seemed there was some disagreement in the group, and simulated really interesting conversations.
What do you think?
Well, we had someone from, I shouldn't write, I shouldn't type, because I talk, right?
Talk.
Okay. We had someone, who want to remain anonymous, from NOW, local NOW organization, and her theme, I think idea and suggestion was that when we're all together, with, oftentimes in domestic violence situations, the abuser is the one who loves to leave the home. I'm saying the totally opposite, the abuse, the person who left the home, and the abuser stays in the home, and she wants to see the verse. And then, which was kind of really great, was that we had the DA, right, from, you know, I say this right? Right, this is the DA from the county, and she was talking about what a challenge it is to get survivors of domestic violence to actually press charges and get evictions, and that it's a much bigger problem than just, you know, just, you know, you can't just remove someone from the home, you know, just talking about the really intricacies of getting justice, right, and her experience, and then we also had someone from Health Imperatives, who was talking about, right, what it's like, you know, how she needs women to be, and, you know, just her on-the-ground experience. And so there was a really interesting debate, too, sort of a theory, the idea, right, of this is how it should be, and then the lived reality, right, of like, the challenges that folks face resolving this issue. And so a lot of it was brought back to sort of psychological issues and mental health issues, and the lack of time, or the slow response in getting folks sort of mental health counseling and so forth, both the folks who were accused, with all some children, and can you read with them, am I doing all right Carolyn? Did I recap? I didn't write any recap.
It's good to hear her perspective, and also what the DA said. I've done a couple of pro bono divorcement family pieces for battered women. The Woods Bar Foundation has a section that focuses on just providing services for battered women and helping with income issues. And the one woman that I work with actually did press charges, the case was prosecuted, and because the DA screwed up on the technical issue, they found him guilty, and he appealed, and because there was a technical issue, he ended up, the conviction was, was an oath, and it wasn't prosecuted again. And then, I represented her in her divorce proceeding. And he's a veteran, he's, you know, not a good man, never sees his children, even though he protests, he wants to see them, get them to court. And they testified about issues, and I was trying to get her soul, physical and male custody of the kids. The judge credited his testimony over criminal testimony, and I couldn't talk about the conviction because he didn't make it, so it's never assisted. It was just so frustrating.
So, did he get it?
They had joined the physical and male custody, but he never sees the kids, so he doesn't, he's never tried to see them in two years since that divorce proceeding ended. And, so, in any event, it's just, it's terribly frustrating when you have, and this judge is known to be very father-friendly, and there are many that are like that out there, but you get, you get, and you have to work with them, and it's almost like, I felt like that these women have been abused by their partners, and then they're abused again about the system, and it's horrible, and I never really understood that before. As, you know, really wanting to try to help to make a difference, it's really hard work, but it's even harder for them. That's what the quality thing should say, a lot of people don't see, they just see what's on the background, they don't see, you know, there's law enforcement response, and trying to get them on board, but really the abuser instead of the evictions.
And, you know, just based on what you just said, it's no wonder a lot of women don't report it. Why be abused a second time?
It's a food system. It's crazy. It's horrible, yeah, really awful. And I would love to talk to more about how we can help, or how to change the system to make it better for women. You know, but we'll talk about those ideas later. So, Jets, we were going around, yeah, that's fine, we were going around talking about our comments about the hearing, and I'll come back to you later, since you just got here. Dawn, what, what did you think?
I thought it went really well. Sorry. Sorry. I thought it went really well. We had some interesting women in our group, one of them had started a group of women who were as sort of mentors, I guess, to one another, and, and my comment to you was, I thought we should follow up with all of them, and thank them, and beyond thank them, encourage them, some way to join you. I'm not sure exactly what, but I thought we should really follow up, because there was, rather than just dropping it after April 24th, there was so much information, name of, from the women. The one, and I'll be very honest, negative, was that I felt that, and I disrespect, that the men in our group, not the men, your representative, who's a very nice man, dominated the conversation, and, and you were wonderful, and, and you tried.
Thank you.
And I think that was a challenge, because this was not above him. And I don't, and I don't know, what's this being taped for?
He's, he's, but we don't want to contest. Can I just say something, though, in his defense, and I hear what you're saying, but that's, that's him, and he needs well, but he can tend to belabor and prolong things.
I'm not questioning, he's, he seems like a fabulous rep.
He's great.
He really is, very good on women's issues and all of those things, but just for a thought for next time, when we include our reps for any men, for that matter, it's about, you know, this is the women's.
It's time to utilize them.
Yeah.
Yes. As, as, Dawn, I think one of the things that I could do, or could have done better next time, or anybody, any of us could have done better, is to set a timeframe for comments.
Yep.
I didn't do, that was my fault, and that's a basic community needs of the one, I should have said, everybody can have two to three minutes, and I won't cut you off to the last person, exactly, I should have done that.
But you did.
But that's how.
Yeah, you did. It just was, you did a great job, you really did.
But I agree, and we, I had thought about that for the open testimony, and hadn't thought about it at all for the small group conversations, because I just thought they would flow, and I didn't really think about any, you know, individuals really being harder to manage in terms of the amount of time they were taking.
And they should be women that do.
Yeah, right, so, I don't, it's just, yeah.
It's just, any issue shouldn't be dominating a conversation, and then, you know, add it on, this is women's issues.
I know.
It was just, it's challenging, I felt that it was terrific, but.
Yeah, I hear, you talk too much. There was one woman who also, I thought, started to focus too much, but, it's fine, we'll figure out, I, we'll figure out.
I just felt like I had to mention it.
Oh, yeah, of course.
I think it was great, and I, I don't, but I think it's something to learn from, and I could tell that you were trying.
Right.
So much detail there, so much.
Yeah, but I really think that, you know, that's a good point you raised, and I think that if we are more cognizant of that, and allow for a specific amount of time for people to talk, we can cut a lot of that back.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, but I wanted to say something real quick about the woman who has the mentoring. I walked away feeling really compelled to follow up and do something with her, and the people that she mentors, you know.
I did, I followed with her, gave her the name of a women's political action group, and connected them, I have no idea, you know, I stepped out, I don't know whether they connected, but I thought, because of what they're doing, might be a good connection.
I think you're right, I think there's an opportunity for this organization to put a new program off the ground, there's obviously a need, being 40 miles from the city, you can't have one at least, I know you're close to the city, but there's not a lot of workers for that, so we could do that.
That was my part of following, you know, thanking people, but then having a little bit beyond.
You're talking about Ellen, right, Ellen Riley?
Yeah, I have a part, but I did connect.
Carol, I have nothing else to add, other than I really liked the smaller format, and I hope that we can proceed with that, and maybe compare it to other formats, but that one really looks better. And I did love the style of using the baseless tips, and getting together the end, and putting our heads together, but that's why I said. But, really nothing further to add, I am going to, for our next meeting, I definitely want to reach out to all the chiefs of police, and I feel like, because maybe because we have the district attorney, that they touched on law enforcement, some of the sheriff's department, they touched a little bit on that, and it really is, you know, this is that important there, between women's issues, domestic violence issues, elder issues, which came up, so I want to reach out, to break in police, and see what, what they can add.
And the county, the district association is very excellent in this issue, and I can think it's on the table, that in perspective, we haven't heard yet, not combined to domestic violence either, for example.
Jess?
I thought it went really well, I think there was a lot of meat taken out of these sessions, for me, to meet, you know, anything with women, and how women are impacted, and on the day-to-day, it's, it's something that I hope taught you to meet. But what I took away from it was the health imperatives, because they talk a lot about, you know, women's reproduction, and, you know, the whole thing that's about abortion right now, which is a hot topic, you know, how you feel about it, but I actually connected with her after the meeting, and they just do so much in terms of resources for women, and what they offer, I mean, it just blew my mind, because I just thought they were just so focused on domestic violence, but they actually do provide resources for women in other areas as well, and just affordable housing, because I see it on the day-to-day, like I have someone that, you know, will literally come to me on Monday and say that they have to get out of their apartment by Wednesday, and they have kids, and they have no place to go, and shelter is not an option, so that means, I took a lot of things with that, so.
You guys did an excellent job, this described for her, I want to give her a lot of credit, because as Dawn mentioned, it was quite a bit of relevant information about this good firm, she did a great job.
People like.
Janice, you got it there. That was bad.
I was taking a lot of credit.
Yeah, I noticed that, no, just kidding.
No, I didn't, but that was the same, I'm trying to be like.
I think that's.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, I think we.
You were right.
Yes.
I also thought it was a terrific couple of hours, I would have liked more people who said they were going to come to come, but that's their loss, and I was thinking about things, sort of to build on what happened at this first hearing, that we'll talk about probably a little bit more in June, and then sort of set the table for our second year of work. But I was thinking about outreach, I was thinking about how to expand our outreach, and who else we should be reaching out to. I also wanted to think out about, maybe having some more, maybe next year, maybe about two hearings, and then one general hearing and one focused hearing on specific perception, like a mentoring for domestic violence, or food inequality, or housing inequality, something like that, to bring out more experts in the area. And then the other thing that really struck me, and I know we've talked about this, and we've danced around it, and I'd like us to think about how we can actually become a center for women, a place for women to come to get resources and information. And the other piece of that is trying to work with the state, actually get a website, so that we can have links to other organizations. I was asked by my sister to help out with a family friend who's involved in an incident of domestic workplace, and workplace violence, she lives and works in the same place last month, and I, you know, just, and obviously, where would you go, who can be, you know, send this young woman to? And I went and did some research for the county where she lives, Henderson, you know, some really well-organized municipal organizations and public entities that just have great resources available, and I could go through the list and say, this makes sense, this makes sense, they had a description of what the mission was, they talked about, you know, who they were serving, who they weren't serving, just really useful, and I was thinking that we could take from that. If we had somebody, and I know we don't have resources, and I'm not sure that we'll ever have a budget to have our own website and our own webmaster, but that's something I'd like to think about, because I think that's part of the outreach, and we, we already have resources amongst ourselves, we invite these people to our hearings, it's just another way to be a resource for women. So, those are the things that I was thinking about coming out of here, I agree with all of your comments, I think it was really wonderful, I loved it, I'm understanding, Liz for suggesting that, I think it made it really personal, in a way that the large hearings didn't.
Carol, so I just wonder if, you know, if a website isn't an option at this time, what, well, that could get messy, I was thinking of Facebook, sometimes those get done.
We have one.
Oh, we do?
So I also wanted to mention, Carol, that we could set up, when I was going to write a description for an intern, right, and then, so many of those are universities in the area, where you could reach out, and I also, I could definitely reach out to my students, while the students that are major in general studies, for example, or public policy, or criminal justice, you name it, right? And we could actually, you know, write a description, this is a goal, this is what you want to do, including create a resource, create a website, right, build that, all the links, the resources that we need, as well as sort of expanding our presence and reaching out to other organizations. So, that's something we might look at, either as making decisions, or more current then for a future agenda, just, we've seen examples, actually, in the, we circulated around the other commissions' reports, one of the commissions had this intern, we did all this work already, and there's a link in that commission report to the Google Doc that she created, of the resources, so there's templates out there, so perhaps if we agree that's something we really want to work on, we could certainly sort of get some help with that.
And intern would get credit for that, or?
Yeah.
Get, get course credit, course credit for that, yeah.
What about, you know, down the road, like having a resource fair, like, you know, talking to the resources in the area, and just kind of have a day, like a Saturday morning, where they come, and they just display all what they offer, and then have, you know, have a women's day, and just focus on women only, like I'm coming, you could have someone do chair massage, you could have someone do, but sometimes women, they just want to go, and then, you know, they can go around and take advantage of different resources, different vendors, and then they have, you know, just something, you know, it doesn't have to be elaborate, I mean, we did it at our trip, where we mostly focused on health of us, and so we had to let this cop in, do some things, and it was a good time, you know, it was just, it was free, and we did a raffle at the end, you know, we had to invite them for the raffle, and they took away some good information.
Yes, did some work on sessions. I would even, to build upon that, I mean, I would love for our hearings to, you know, have a hearing time, and have, you know, two hours before, as sort of a resource fair for people to come and go, and have all those members attend before the hearing, because that helps draw them into the hearing, to connect the two, that's probably, I'd like the idea of starting, though, perhaps, and seeing how a resource fair. fair type of event would go on a Saturday morning, you know, at the library or something like that. And then sort of building on that and eventually linking the two, because we have to just be mindful of our own resources and time and commitment. But I think it's a great idea as well. So building on that, other things that you'd like to see coming out of the hearing, things that we can think about, and I'm going to give five more minutes on this and then we're going to move on to the, to our report, just for a roundtable, ideas you have to build upon, think about for our next year, you know, things that the hearing stimulated you to want to think about doing.
What about a career fair? Having local employers come in and showcase jobs that they may have to offer. And not necessarily just as community, but we could obviously broaden that. But keeping in mind that, you know, we'd like to have people that have jobs within reach for people, but women's county is pretty big too.
Well, we also have to be mindful of the fact that we're a women's organization. We can't have employers come in and provide good jobs just for women.
Yeah, that's true.
So that is a nice idea. I'm not sure how, and there might be a way, but I think about that. I'm not saying no, I still be careful of the fact that.
Right, right.
Because we could.
But for, yeah, so that's true.
Well, yeah, definitely. So that's, that's the only issue that I probably have to be open to anybody, yeah.
I had a little notice about logistics for next time, like eight ads for everybody, right? Signs, we have that. Also, I felt like the groups were great and then we would return back to the large group meeting, every speaker, whether the speakers have to go back to the audience. And I think there might be a way, which the speaker could be to the side, or we could have reframed that so that people maintained the sense of like we're talking to each other. That was very, I thought, awkward in that moment. And they were all way in the front, even if they were spacing, but they were in the back, so they still were part of the social circle. And it was just, it just increased the climate.
Yep.
Those are just quick sort of logistics things, I think, for next time. And learn.
Thank you. Survey development.
We were talking about that, right?
Oh, yes. I would want to.
Before, no, no.
Absolutely. So a tool that we could use to collect information of people that were not in attendance. And I was thinking about different options for that. A tool that we could send to girls. Girls, by girls I mean ages like twelve to eighteen, middle school and high school. And we could make it very short, don't want to take up too much of their time, but we do survey marketing. But I'd love to find out what issues are they thinking about, because they're not the issues I'm thinking about. This is the commission, so we're getting girls. Okay, but the other thing I'd like to focus on is a tool for people that would never be able to come to a hearing, whether that be the elderly or the homebound mothers who just cannot, because they're scheduled, like, there's a lot of issues.
Does anybody submit what they need?
I have looked at the mail address that I wanted, and please submit written comments.
I didn't want to say, but you've been on it since the hearing, you haven't seen anything?
I'm not sure if I've been on it since the hearing.
So, okay.
I could look, but I'm trying to think notes at the same time, so.
No, fine. Do you mind looking, Carol? Because there is one person who had called me, who works with incarcerated women and was interested in understanding whether that is within our mission. And I said, absolutely, it could make a hearing, but I asked her to please submit written comments and I don't know if she did or not. I answered probably me as well, and I never got anything from her, but I don't know if she just submitted it directly to the, our line address. Okay, I don't have access to it.
Okay, I have another thought. What about perhaps going into a women's shelter or food pantry?
Now that you mention that, health imperatives, they partner or they work with health, health iest place.
Yeah.
But it's domestic violence, you know, trying to get access, but to do health imperatives because they have a contact person there, but they're all, they're always looking for volunteer.
Yeah, just do something, I don't know whether it's to make dinner for them or to just go in and, you know, sit and chit chat.
Volunteer day.
Yeah, volunteer day at a women's shelter.
And also maybe a nice place to reach out for testimony as well and not mess her otherwise, right? What are the tasks that are needed? As well as incarceration, right? We could reach out, especially to those two groups that likely wouldn't be able to attend some of these meetings, right? We could especially to reach out to girls incarcerated and women, most of shelters.
So, Carol, you guys, because I had to go, she was at the age, so she didn't have any great speaker. Could you forward that to my Gmail, please? I want to, because I do think, I noticed that in, I haven't read all of theirs too, actually. Great. Yeah, just for them. So I noticed that some of the commissions actually reprinted testimony that was submitted in writing, some really summarized to each individual speaker. So moving on now, because we have fifteen minutes before.
Can I have this on?
Yeah.
So with the survey, Liz and I were talking earlier, this might be a great thing to look at for a future, over the next year. I do have experience of putting this type of information gathering together, but took around the voter rolls in each town and if your request adjusts females and ages, they're registered, so eighteen to one hundred and fifty, one hundred and ten maybe, and for each other town. And then we did, we have their physical addresses and their political affiliation aside, which should just send out to all of the women. There'll be some budgetary instructions, obviously. I don't know if we still have access, I need money from this cash, this card, this will be there.
Or done?
Yeah. So, okay. But I'm thinking maybe for next year, that might be another, even if we're a level funded, we did have extra money that was left over, that might be a great thing for, I don't know if they allow a discount through the Massachusetts Commission, as far as folks who just get some, but that's something else to look at. But that voter roll is direct access to people in the community, setting it up to as many people as possible is a great way to kind of get a blanket message.
Well, something we could do is just even a postcard. If we set our calendar at the first meeting in September or even in June, we could perhaps wind out the cost of the bulk mailing postcard to all those voters and then sort of give them our schedule, you know, we're meeting, this is when we meet generally, but here are our two hearing dates this year, if you want to do two next year. And, you know, here's our Facebook page, come learn about us, come to one of our meetings. You know, you can find our monthly meetings, you know, at your town clerk's office, something like that, so.
And so the test.
Yeah, and as a common participant, exactly. I think that's a really smart idea. I don't know, bulk mailing is not as cheap as you might think it is, just the level that I know. I don't know that much about it, but if you can look into that, that would be a great.
Are you talking about every woman in?
In this registered vote.
That's emailing, that's really costly.
I mean, there's way too many examples too, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, mailings are very expensive.
Let's say the list is like sixty thousand people or so, there's, there's a hundred people in a territorial district, let's say half of them are sixty thousand, let's say fifty thousand were to vote, twenty thousand. Even if I buy this kind of postage to have.
To print that, too.
Were you thinking of a jail fund?
Yeah, I mean, well, I would worry about that too, I think. Yeah. So, I mean, worst case scenario, we have to shrink it down, but I think it's a great way to reach out.
Yeah. The sample idea, I think, is one way to, right, to, yeah, the cost cutting measure.
Yeah. Yeah, because I can't imagine that we're going to have much more budget next year than we have this year, and I'm not sure we want to spend it all on the house supplies for another couple hearings.
We have some things that we will be able to roll into next year, but if we want to go hard on transportation or something else this year too. But again, all those are decisions to be made in either June or in our first meeting in the fall.
And we should. Sorry. Maybe we should have just the email elected officials in all of us, in all of us using that, so that might be a great starting point.
I mean, I want to take four of them.
I was going to say, that's a much, much, much longer list.
We could stop at the end.
But, you know, when you add in the town groups, which are in many instances, the elected officials, or even just female officials, or just all elected officials, you know, just do selectmen or, you know, there's, yeah, well, let's talk about.
Yeah, right.
Are there instances where organizations, public organizations are requested to send a delegate? So we could say the key department could commence to delegate an officer, a leading officer as a liaison or representative of a meeting or something like that.
Yes, yes, yes. Great. Anything else before we move on to the report? Okay. So, adding the report. So you all may have seen some copies of the state commission's report and the input from the regional commissions, which I think was on, I sent around in the pages. So I wanted to talk about what you all would like to have included in the report and then I think I would like a volunteer or two to work on the report with me and attempt to try to get something done quickly. I have some ideas in my head and I don't think there's a, I don't think it's going to be a huge, long report, it's our first year. So ideas for inclusion in the report.
We were just looking at the other commission's reports from last year and they're just using this assembly, talk about conference room tools, future mission, our bylaws, that type of thing. Talk about, you know, reflective, but also kind of, you know, looking for the future and, I mean, but we could look at Bristol County's like first, and they were very inclusive, very, I think, with media, you know, links to Google Drive and that kind of thing. So I think that would be, we use that kind of way. We have, we have, you know, Uber Rains, we've got a good guy, and that, why is that better?
Sasha sent it, so, yeah, it was very helpful. Anything else in particular that you'd also like included? What I was thinking was even like using these charts and reprinting what's on these charts as summary from our two small working groups. We don't have minutes yet, but, you know, if anybody has, and I know Christina took really good notes, I took some, if she took pretty good notes from the reconvening and maybe, you know, a summary of the testimonies and the discussion and the summary from the small groups would be helpful. Because I'd like to have some content to share about what we actually did in the hearing, I think that's important. Is there anybody who's willing to work with me on putting this together? I was going to tell you.
Yeah, I just wanted to realize the question.
Okay, all right, I know, but you'd be allowed to breathe.
Yeah.
But you sound like you definitely have some ideas, so if you would like to put together the template, Carolyn, that would be terrific. All right, yeah, take them, that would be terrific, thank you. I can send you the audio files that I got as well, if you want.
Yeah.
That would be great. So anybody have specific content they'd like included, send it to Carolyn. Carolyn and I will work on putting together something that I think we'll try to get done in like in the next couple of weeks before the end of the month and get it submitted up to, as a draft, but to be managed, just so that we have something to go into the commission report, is that, is there a motion to?
Would you be a D E for that? Do you need a D E?
Well, yeah, yeah, that's fine, yep. So today's the eighteenth, next weekend is more on the weekend and then next week and the weekend after that is June first. So why don't you get any content you want to get to Carolyn by Thursday or the twenty third, that's five days out? And then we'll work on it and try to get something up to the commission by the, the following week, by five thirty. That would be our goal, to try to get something done. I've got a trial on the twenty eighth, but so I'll be a little bit crazy over the long term, but hopefully not too bad, I want to get it done before. So we should be able to, plus the holiday weekend, we all work too much as it is, so I think that should work for a reasonable goal. So is there a motion to allow submission as a draft to the commission of what Carolyn and I will gather by the end of the month as an interim filing so that there's something to be included in the state report?
A motion?
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Any votes? All right, great. And then we'll circulate that to everybody and we'll discuss it on the final vote and any further input from the commission as a whole at the meeting in June. And then we'll submit our file report right after the June meeting and make any, make any changes. That's all I have on our agenda for today. Any old business? Any new business? Do you, what are the dates, like, are you going to be in the summer? Yeah, so, sorry, missed that. We, we're a ten-month mission, so we don't be in July offices, like in September, June, based on our bylaws. So we set the next meeting date at June fifteenth, Saturday. It's either going to be at nine AM in the Cleveland County offices or ten AM here, we just don't know if Christina and Tom can get us access to the Cleveland County offices. I won't delay it that much. And that would be our loss, we need until September. So at that meeting, or we could now set, if you want to set our first September meeting, or we could wait until the June meeting to set our fall meeting schedule. I do think we should set our fall. All right, so in June, let's set our, let's plan on setting our fall meeting schedule at least till the end of the year. And I want to be able to figure out what would be one, just general goals in terms of hearing, if we want it for one, two, how we want to do it, think about what we want to do then. I will say, now that we know that we have to have our report submitted to the state commission by the middle of May, we need to be able to have our meeting and have at least one meeting, have our hearings and have at least a meeting or so afterwards, or be working on the report during the course of the year so that it can be finalized and be able to be submitted by the May.
Accumulated.
Right, right. So maybe something to think about is thinking about our, the jobs and roles and maybe creating a position of sort of compiler and someone who works on the report during the course of the year. I think that might be a helpful role, because when we meet again in September, we will reconvene and we'll reorganize, we'll talk about officers again, because we do that on an annual basis. And we can talk about adding, filling in, changing positions, a little bit of recap of how our first year has gone. All right. Anything else? Anything more to the national conference? Oh, sorry, there reminds me, next Tuesday is advocacy day. I just hit the information I circulated, there was an individual, a quest for individual signups from the state commission, so if you're going to go, please sign up through the link from Sasha in the materials that I emailed to you earlier week. I hope you can go, I still, it's going to be a day of decision for me, I'd really like to go. Just, I don't know, I'd still be behind for how much time I have. So, and then, so what's the, I don't know the dates, but I know July, I want to say it might be the last, the weekend before the last, I shouldn't get that the dates, but I know it's in Chicago and I think it's like two or three days. It's a national association, a top commission of women, they have an annual conference. I don't know anything about that. Jen, would you bring us some information on that?
Sure.
Sasha's giving me email. Did she? Okay, I missed that. She sent it to everybody, so what I was supposed to forward, okay, that's what I think I want to know.
She sent something like preliminary about like how much you would be.
I sent something like preliminary about like how much it would be, how many appointments would be.
Is there funding to go?
No.
Only for the Massachusetts, the state ones?
The State Commission, the State Commissioners.
For a couple of them, even that.
Yeah, I'm sure, it's not much.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then there is the Massachusetts Women's Conference, it's a private conference that's held, it's usually, what, it's in early December, every year, it sells out really quickly.
Really fast.
I would...
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
Still, they have the support, I've never done it.
It's nice.
I've heard it's really a lot of fun, and I would, they, their communications are kind of hard to follow, I've found.
I agree.
You go to their Facebook page, and they, maybe they're accepting, you know, registrations, maybe they're not, it's very odd, but I think that they start registering soon.
They do, you should run that off.
It's self-centered, very does, it's like all day, and it's great.
It's usually like night before, the night before, there's a keynote speaker, the next, another conference all day with another keynote speaker, and there's a...
Oh, sure, different.
I went a few years ago, it was very, very important, the governor was there, and they had the house ready.
It's actually, they have...
Yeah. Because usually by the time you see that email, if you don't sign up right then, it's too late.
Just a one day, like, it's like that.
It's a, it's a C-Port event on Saturday.
Oh, it is.
It's a C-Port event on Saturday.
It's what I thought it was like, I think.
I think, yeah.
I went to one, like, 10 years ago, you know, it was like more of it.
Oh, yeah. So something to just keep, I think that, I'll, I'll see if I can find out by June what the status is, because I think it's a great opportunity to go and see and then probably talk about organizations, find out if there's an opportunity.
Because the State Commission, they have a table.
Right. If the State Commission has a, doesn't, our governor doesn't have a table, something that we might find out something to think about doing and ask the regional commissioners to come and set the table.
Yes.
So, so the other, the other counter advocacy there, if you saw that email, is the semi-annual convening of the regional commissioners. So that's, for me, that's almost, I want to go for that more than anything else, and so I may try to at least come in the afternoon.
Is that like what I'm seeing, that's, that's at 1:00?
Should we say the company of this, or is anyone going?
I don't know.
I'm late by about 12:00.
Maybe 4:00?
Four, two or, two or, yeah, she, she usually goes to that, I think, in Jordan, in Jordan City.
She might not be giving me any parking, I just think the morning park.
She's a regular bus lady.
Well, uh, 3:00.
To get on the bus.
Ride the, ride the bus, have to drive down the Bristol, to ride the street. It's a long way, is it further back?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's further than, yeah, than Austin, for me. Okay, anything else? All right, take a motion to adjourn.
I like the 10:00 time, even though, thank you, it's been quite, it just, I'm late, but it gives me, it's, I don't know, as good as...
I also like 10:00.
Just leave, you know, I just...
Okay, I'll go away. All right. We are adjourned, thank you all, and I'm...
Thank you, that's what you had to be.